This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening. Welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Public Meeting for Tuesday, February 11th. This meeting is called to order. As is the case with all of our public meetings, we allow for public participation, and that is our next item. If there's members of the community who have questions or feedback to provide to the board or the superintendent, the opportunity is now. I do have one, which is Ari Shohat. So we'd ask you to go to the podium and state your name, even though I just did, and where you live, your town, and go ahead and listen.
Ari Shohat, Brighton, New York. Okay. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I wanted to share an incident that happened to my son at 12 Corners Middle School last month. My son, who is in sixth grade, wears a star of David proudly. On January 13th, another student in my son's class, who has never engaged with him, came up to him and said, "Heil Hitler." Now, the incident was addressed by the school and the administration, and I thank them for that. But I'm not pleased or agree with the outcome. I asked Dr. Edmonds to take this opportunity to educate. Being that the event happened two weeks before International Holocaust Remembrance Day, I requested that a speaker come in and address the school. I offered to find, underwrite, facilitate such conversations, but nothing happened. This was a missed opportunity to educate. In fact, when my two TCMS students in sixth and eighth grade came home on January 27th, I asked them, was the day even acknowledged by the school? Both replied no, but it was mentioned on the morning announcements that today is National Chocolate Cake Day. You have to understand where this is coming from. I'm the grandchild of four Holocaust survivors. My son is the great-grandchild of five Holocaust survivors. With the increasing rise in antisemitism in our community and our country, incidents like this are just inexcusable. One side of me wants to see the innocence of the situation. Kids make mistakes, and they learn from them. However, the other side of me, the side of me that sees this happening before, questions everything. How are we expected to educate students on their mistakes or misunderstandings when the school district itself doesn't put a heavy emphasis on educating the subject? The seventh grade goes to Washington, DC, but they don't go to the Holocaust Museum. My oldest son just started his first Holocaust reading, and it was his second semester of eighth grade. Brighton's an amazing district with such great diversity and leadership. We proudly celebrate our differences and enable our community to be who they are and to be accepted. The world is changing, and there is a different emphasis placed on topics that quite frankly didn't exist when I was in school. But when a celebrity with more Instagram followers than Jews on this planet takes out a hateful Super Bowl ad, sells T-shirts with swastikas on it, it's the responsibility of school districts to tact and shift and educate on what is pertinent and quite honestly, a clear and present danger for a significant population of its community and students. So I'm here tonight to start a conversation of what must change in our district. There needs to be a heavy emphasis on Holocaust education at earlier ages to combat the rise in antisemitism. There should be zero tolerance for any form of hate or derogatory speech. And finally, actions have consequences. It is important that our children and communities see that. Actions that go unanswered become normalized and accepted. That's it.
First, we thank you. I'll speak on behalf of the board. We thank you for coming forward and expressing your opinion. I know Dr. McGowan will want to say a couple of things, but we're welcome, we welcome rather, all forms of feedback, and we appreciate you taking the time to come in tonight and do that for us.
Appreciate it.
I'm surprised to have a conversation, Ari, in front of like 20 of our closest friends here. I think the public conversation is a good one, and I'm glad that we could talk about it. But I mean, to be honest, you're really only representing part of the conversation, and I want people to know that. It's broadcasters, a lot of people in the room. We talked for a long time on multiple occasions about this situation. One, the comment that was repeated by a child, I want to point out. Developmentally, I think it's important to point that out, was never excused. It wasn't okay. It was a line from a movie. It was the mistake of a young person.
That was the context that was addressed, okay? And I did mention that, okay, in my public notes, okay, I did mention that, that it was addressed by the district. I don't need to be satisfied with how it was addressed.
No, I'm not asking you to be satisfied. I'm just clarifying for people who might be watching, because you referred to it later as inexcusable, as if it was excused by us. So I would like to make sure it's clear to people that might be listening to that, that we would never excuse that. So I'm not countering the things you said. I'm clarifying for other people. Or am I debating it in this space? But we can have another conversation if you'd like to do that. I would say that, one, it was addressed very directly with that student in ways that were appropriate for that child, for the building, in line with our code of conduct. And it is never excused. It is not okay. But it is also a learning opportunity in a moment that we did follow up very directly, very quickly, and very concretely in ways that are in line with our code of conduct. And again, create an environment that is supportive of all in that learning process, but did address it and addressed the harm that was done. I think the other piece that you mentioned, we talked extensively about, the Holocaust Remembrance Day and the juxtaposition to the National Chocolate Cake Day, and that that is definitely regrettable. We also talked about a pathway for that to be looked at differently.
Sure, which I, and I think that we're on that pathway moving forward.
I just would love to finish, because I listened to everything that you had to say, and I want to address it very directly and be upfront with people. That we talked about a pathway for that, and that announcements were generated by students. And it wasn't an announcement that was done frivolously to disregard National Holocaust Remembrance Day, but rather, kids generated announcements that day. And on any given day, there are other events and memorializations that can be made and should be made. And I did acknowledge to you that that should have been something that was said on the morning announcements. And going forward, we will adjust that practice as well. And talked about your students' leadership possibilities and opportunities relative to putting those announcements in and being a part of that, and perhaps forming a club around that. I think there were a lot of other conversations, and I do want to make sure people are aware we're had in that. And I also think you bring up a fair point relative to Holocaust education, which we do take seriously here. We have studied over time. We have added to our curriculum. And I'm going to ask Dr. Rio to reach out to you to talk to you about the different things that do happen in the entire secondary experience around Holocaust education, because I think it's important for you to know that. And for anybody who's listening or viewing, to feel free to contact Dr. Rio to get more information about that as well.
Okay, appreciate that.
Thanks.
But can we, I mean, since we're having a dialogue and open conversation, when students break a code of conduct, okay, part of the limitations that the district has is that, you know, there's no, and again, I'm not looking for stocks and whatnot, but there's no open conversation about consequences. And I think that for children, that's difficult for them to understand. Because when things happen, or something goes wrong, or quite honestly, something goes right, usually those, that has consequences or celebratory consequences. And I think that to explain to an 11-year-old why, again, something may have or may not have happened, okay, but when something isn't visually understood or communicated with the family, that there are consequences, that's a hard thing to explain to an 11-year-old, or an 18-year-old, or quite honestly, a 45-year-old.
Sure. Sure. Well, as I explained to you multiple times, and now we'll explain it publicly for people to hear, you will never hear about the consequence for another student, and that's their right to privacy, nor will they hear about a consequence for your child or any other children, because that's not how we operate. So there is a conversation that happens. There is a restorative practice that happens. There is a lot that goes around that. And there's attention paid to it that, again, is developmentally appropriate, in line with our code of conduct, and people have every ability to access those materials and see what was done. I think it's probably more productive, other than just clarifying the things we've talked about now for hours in public session, for you and I to have another conversation. I don't think a dialogue in this space is really helpful, nor appropriate actually for this.
Okay. But again, I think the purpose of me coming here and bringing this incident up is that I do think that there needs to be a focus on Holocaust education in the school district. And I do think that we need to tact and shift to what is a pertinent issue in today's environment moving forward.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here who would like to make a comment? Seeing none, we'll move on with the agenda. You all had a chance to review the agenda. Motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Still moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Sue. All those in favor? You've also got a chance to review the minutes from our January 21st meeting. Any comments, questions, edits with regards to those minutes? Motion to approve?
Still moved.
Moved by Eleanor?
Second.
Seconded by Carrie Lynn. All those in favor?
Aye.
We now go through for two, approval for two teacher tenure recommendations. Typically, we do these in June, but depending on hire date, we sometimes get a couple that are out of cycle. So this is great to do tonight. Our practice is to put these through and get approval. And then Kevin will do a readout with each of them while Dr. Lee has their tenure certifications with me. That's why we're joking.
Love you, Derek.
Okay. First of all, you've had a chance to read the write-up. These are two outstanding individuals, and we're going to hear more about both of them in just a minute. Any questions with regards to these recommendations? Motion to approve the teacher tenure recommendations for Meredith Williamson and Teresa Lawson.
Still moved.
Moved by Esther.
Second.
Seconded by Sue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Christina and I are going to move up there, and you're going to take that.
Absolutely. I'll give you a second to do that.
Thank you.
So I'll ask the tenure recipients, when I call your name, to just come up to the podium and stand with Mr. Davis and Dr. Lee, so we can thoroughly embarrass everybody who's present tonight. Really, so we can honor you appropriately, because this is quite a momentous occasion. So the first person to recognize would be Meredith Williamson. Meredith, if you could come on up to the podium, please. Meredith comes to us with a bachelor's degree in business administration and a master's in initial adolescence and special education. Her first degree from Western Michigan, second from Roberts Wesleyan. Certifications in social studies seven through 12, and students with disabilities, seven through 12, as a journalist. She began her career in education in the Geneva City School District as a special education teacher before coming to us in 2020. Meredith's letter from Dr. Edmonds cites wonderful descriptions of her great work. She writes, "Merritt's exceptional dedication, pedagogical expertise, and unwavering commitment to student success make her an invaluable asset to our education community." Since joining 12 Corners Middle School, Meredith has consistently demonstrated a remarkable ability to engage and inspire her students. Two years ago, TCMS restructured the 15-to-1 social studies program to service both seventh and eighth-grade students within the same class. She collaborated with colleges, both in and out of the district, to redesign her entire curriculum to support students in a thematic journey through American history. Her focus has shifted her students from engaging in rote memorization of dates and facts to thinking more deeply as historians. As she continues this work, Meredith regularly shows her remarkable ability to scaffold instruction and support each student in making meaningful connections between historical events. Her understanding of students' strengths and ability to tailor lessons and leverage those while building skills to address gaps are truly commendable. As a co-teacher in the ICT social studies class, Meredith has proven herself to be a collaborative and effective educator. Her co-teachers praise her deep understanding of the curriculum and her skill in differentiating instruction to meet the needs of all learners. Her adaptability and resilience have been particularly evident during challenging times. Denise Mantal, the team leader of the Special Education Department at TCMS, has highlighted Meredith's ability to navigate the complexities of hybrid learning and create a sense of normalcy for her students. She recalled how Meredith began teaching at TCMS during the hybrid COVID year and handled the craziest, quote, "craziest mishmash position" with ease, because she simply focused on developing rapport with students to help them feel comfortable even when they were struggling. Beyond her district instructional responsibilities, Meredith also emerged as a valuable mentor and colleague. She's generously shared her expertise with new teachers, providing support, guidance, and encouragement. Her willingness to go the extra mile demonstrates her commitment to fostering a collaborative and supportive work environment at TCMS. In conclusion, Meredith embodies the qualities of an exceptional educator. Her dedication, passion, and expertise make her an invaluable asset to our school district. She was wholeheartedly recommended for tenure by Dr. Edmonds, and we look forward to witnessing her continued contributions to the academic and social, emotional growth of our students. Congratulations. That's fantastic. And next, we have Terry Lawson. Terry, can you come on, please? Terry has a bachelor's degree in psychology from Nazareth and a bachelor's degree in Spanish from Nazareth as well. A master's in school psychology from RIT and advanced certification in school psychology, also from RIT. Permanent certifications as a school psychologist and bilingual education, CPS administration. She has teaching experience, school experience as a school psychologist in Saranac, then Happiness House in Florida for cerebral palsy in Canadago, New York, school psychologist at Roy Hart, and a school psychologist now here for the district located here in Central Hoptes. Deanna Spagnola writes that she has had the privilege of collaborating with Terry in her role as a district psychologist. She's observed firsthand Terry's integrity, work ethic, and deep commitment to her profession, and ultimately, to our students and families. One of Terry's many strengths include her exceptional ability as an evaluator. Terry creates a safe, comfortable testing experience while establishing rapport and trusting relationships with students, colleagues, and families. She demonstrates exceptional customer service when explaining the steps in our relationship process of the Committee on Preschool Special Education and Committee of Special Education. Terry demonstrates an unwavering commitment to honoring process and regulation. She models to educational teams a thoroughness with data collection, but also the ability to interpret scores while balancing implications in the classroom and for an individual student's needs. She truly considers the whole child. She's a dedicated advocate on behalf of her colleagues and the role of a school psychologist. She is not only highly professional, but extremely knowledgeable. She holds certification as a psychologist, again, bilingual education, nationally certified school psychologist as well. She consistently participates in professional development and seeks out the latest research. She's highly regarded in the county as a CPSC chairperson and has been referred to by county colleague as one of a kind. We would agree. She is facilitating training for district staff and has facilitated professional development beyond our buildings, including private parochial schools within the district community. She's a member of the district mental health team, mental steering committee, and our trauma illness inquiry team. She's a team player, always at the ready to assist in the office of city services at the building and district level. Our students, families, and staff will continue to benefit from Terry's dedication, knowledge, and steadfast commitment to making the right decisions for all students. It is our privilege to celebrate Terry and congratulate her on her well-deserved tenure. Thanks very much to Terry and Meredith. We are so excited for both of you all that you've given to the district. And this lifelong, in a sense, commitment the district makes to you, I think is emblematic of how we feel about your incredible work. Well, well deserved honor. So great job to you both. Congratulations.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the 2025-2026 school calendar. I'll note, as we like to say, it's fully inclusive again, and Dr. McGowan, I'll obviously offer you the opportunity to make a comment. Each year, there are a number of holidays that fall during different times, but we're going to continue to make sure that all of our students have, I guess what I would say, a safe feeling about how they worship and what they celebrate, I guess is the best way to say it. So that'll be available. We'll put it up for approval, and then we'll let you make a comment, Dr. McGowan. Any questions with regards to the calendar? Motion to approve?
Still moved.
Moved by Eleanor?
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor?
Well, first comment is, yes, Dan will post it like right now. Dr. Hall, you're finding out that it is not a two-week break in December. The Dr. Hall break does not exist this year. I can see him leaning over, looking at Dan's tweets. But more important than that, I will say that it is, again, I think, I say "fully" in quotes, inclusive calendar, because it's never fully, right? There obviously are so many different faith traditions that would not be able to be represented entirely. However, relative to those that might be represented by the largest groups in our school community and in communities in general, at least locally, we still will have Rosh Hashanah, both days off next year, Yom Kippur, Diwali, and Eid. Asian Lunar New Year is during the February break next year. If you notice on the calendar, the dates that are listed are those that are days off of school that coincide with one of those holidays. So sometimes people will look for Asian Lunar New Year and say, "Well, why isn't it on the calendar?" Well, because it falls during the break. So there are lots of things that are not listed. For example, Christmas is not listed. Easter's not listed, because they don't fall on school breaks. They, or they fall on a school break already or on a weekend day. But I am really, really proud of this district relative to being as inclusive as we possibly can, continuing to be the only district locally to have off for Eid and for Diwali, and think that that is just simply the right thing for our community. And I'm very excited and appreciate your support of that, and our community's support of that, because here's what it also means. All kidding aside about Dr. Hall's two-week holiday, December, experience, that means that that Monday, Tuesday, that week, we have school. So on the 22nd to 23rd. There will be other districts locally that don't. And I think that it is something here that is just understood. And instead of having those two days off, we have lots of other days in other places that allow our families to celebrate the most important traditions in their households, and we're very excited and proud of that. So we continue to have three study days in the calendar should we need them. If we go past that, we would have remote instruction, but we would not on those days initially. We worked through that over the years as well, but other than that, everything else is accounted for appropriately elsewhere.
And I'll also say joking aside, there are a lot of people who want to get this information as quickly as possible. So to your point about it being posted shortly, there are people who are rejoicing there. So, yes. Okay. Next up, speaking of calendars, both Board Vice President, Dr. Christina Lee, and myself will not be able to attend the 25th, February 25th meeting, which is our second meeting in February. So we are asking for a motion to appoint Dr. Susan Gasparina to officiate the February 25th Board of Education meeting in our absence. Any questions with regards to this motion? Motion to approve?
Still moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Carrie Lynn. All those in favor?
Aye.
She probably would do much better than me on her first try. Sorry. It shouldn't be a problem at all. Two, next two bids with regards to construction and construction services in the district. I'll ask Mr. Alamo to make a comment about each, and then I'll add a comment. These are two separate things. The first one is approval of the construction bid for the 2023-2024 Phase 1. We've got, I'm just, now I'm going to speak first. We've got a lot of different projects that are in planning phases, in execution phases, and in completion phases. And the best way to denote them is with the date and a phase. So this is the 2023-2024 Phase 1. Lou, do you want to do a quick one or two sentence summary, please?
Sure. So the scope of work that's covered these bids, these bids are for all the prime contractors. There's general construction, electrician, plumbing, mechanical, and a little GS project for HAC full system. This includes the tech, industrial tech suite at the high school. It includes the music suites at the high school, the fax team suites at the middle school, other infrastructure improvements at the middle school, the French Road secure entry vestibule, the main office upgrade, main office modification, that's one of our upgrades, our HP system. The bids were well within our budget parameters. That campus construction has helped us develop. So we're making this recommendation with confidence that we will establish a goal that the owners approve. And work starts with board's approval. Contracts will be ready, and we'll be ready to swing hammers hopefully in April.
There are some projects that can take place during the school year. There are some that have to wait for the summer, depending on a number of different things. Our thanks is always, Lou, to your buildings team led by John Novelli and a bunch of great working folks there who work real hard with campus to make sure those costs are within line, and great job planning for this. So questions with regards to this construction bid? Motion to approve?
Still moved.
Moved by Sue?
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, this next construction-related approval is for professional services contract. Professional services contract. As Lou noted, we work with campus construction as our construction managers. They work on the projects associated with the three schools and the architects with French Road, the middle school, and the high school. This is a contract to work with them at Council Rock, because we have a different architect for Council Rock. Lou, is there anything you want to add to that, or just note there, please?
No, I would just like to, we've been partners with campus construction since the 2017 first facility that they were the construction administrators for Phase 1 of Council Rock. So it made a lot of sense for them to expand the knowledge of the building and help us administer this phase of construction, too. They've been instrumental in partnering with us during the pre-referendum phase to involve the pre-referendum estimates. So it's with great confidence that I recommend this service contract to the board for community partnership.
I'd agree. They've been an excellent partner and advocate strongly on our behalf. And I mean this figuratively, not literally. They'll swing a pretty good hatchet with bids and things like that to help us do the best from a fiscal standpoint for our community. So I appreciate their partnership in that as well. Any questions with regards to this approval? Motion to approve?
Still moved.
Moved by Carrie Lynn?
Second.
Seconded by Eleanor. All those in favor? Next up, we have our reports. We'll start with the financial reports. You've had a chance to review the treasurer's report for the period ending December 30th, 2024, and the financial summary for the period ending December 30th, 2024. These do require approval from the board. Any questions with either of these financial reports as noted in Agenda Item 11, Letter A? Motion to approve?
Still moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Sue. All those in favor? Dagny, how are you this evening?
Good. How are you?
Looking forward to our student report tonight.
So for academics, the third quarter and second semester finally started. College and Career Night took place January 16th, held by the Counseling Department for students and their parents. For sports, teams are ending the regular season by honoring their seniors and starting sectionals. Wrestling celebrated Senior Night January 10th and had sectionals last weekend. Swimming also had sectionals last weekend with the prelims and the finals. And hockey celebrated Senior Night on January 17th. Also, US Rowing selected two students from VHS to make the Scholastic Honor Roll. For clubs, Acapulco took place January 10th, which is where all the acapella groups performed. Key Club made thank you letters for all the janitors. Red Cross Club held a fundraiser at Five Guys on January 30th. Say Yes to the Dress is this Thursday. This is where students can come in and look for free formal wear to take. For executive council, we held our annual winter dance on January 31st. This is where members of executive and class council helped sell tickets and set up the dance. And for right now, we're just planning elections for next year's executive council. Other than that, Panera, Class of 2026 held a fundraiser at Panera on January 23rd and a fundraiser at Chipotle on February 1st. Tom Kursting was a guest speaker that came in to educate Brighton students on serious impacts of phone usage. Brighton students took time out of their day to learn about Lunar New Year and make lanterns with their classmates. Last weekend, Brighton High School presented Mamma Mia, which was very successful. And now they're planning the language archive, which is the Spring Play. That's it.
That's a lot. Thank you very much. Did we announce that she was on?
I don't know. I was going to say, you should.
Karen, do you want to take the responsibility yet?
Dagny, did you want to tell us anything about your fencing career? And about your recent? A recent trip to Boston, UTEP?
Oh, yeah. There's a World Cup in Boston that I went to.
Just to attend?
I fenced today.
But as a member of Team USA?
Yeah.
Which is a significant.
Yeah, it was really exciting.
I mean, Dagny, there's humility in that. Come on. There was this event, I went to it. No, I actually participated in it, representing the country. Congratulations to you.
Thank you so much.
I suspect that you might have some homework and other things to do tonight, so if you need to slip out, feel free to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you again for your report. Board of Education, Monroe County School Board, District Operations. We had a snow day in January, and the February 1 is tomorrow. So Karen and I will be attending that one, and that's going to be with regards to foundation. So that's District Operations. Information exchange.
I've actually attended two since our last board meeting. The first one was in mid-January, and this is actually something I'll be sending to both TCMS higher education is, and looking at higher education as anything that is beyond a high school diploma. This program, excuse me, is a new ambassador program that is encouraged for teachers, counselors, librarians to attend, and it's New York State Department of Labor's way of trying to combat our labor shortage that we're currently experiencing and what we are going to be anticipating in the next several years. Many of the teachers that presented said that this is the best professional development they've ever participated in, so hopefully some of our teachers can join in. And then our second meeting that we just had was the 35th. This was all about FERPA, which is Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, as well as the Education Law 2D, and it basically just discussed our students' privacy and data and how we protect that as school district, and what best practices look like. So, information exchange.
Great job.
Thank you. Nothing going on with legislative?
So Legislative Committee held its flagship event just this past week, no, two weekends ago. We had great attendance, 135 members from across the district, and 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 of our local, eight of our local representatives and both of our regions were there with us. Dr. McGowan, Mr. Alamo, Larry, Christina, Esther, Sue, and Mark Kokonovich, who is our Brighton representative to the BOSI's Board, were there. Dr. McGowan, you had an opportunity to sit and lead the conversation at Senator Cooney's table. Is there anything you wanted to add about the experience?
I would just point out that he and the Senator Clark, our Director of Representatives, but everybody in the room, including our Regents, Regent Hall, Regent Orwood, were so receptive to the feedback, thoughtful. I thought Monroe County School Board prepared a great event. I appreciated your leadership in that. I thought that Senator Cooney was just, I wouldn't, I want to say uncommonly receptive, but he always is, thoughtful, great questions. In some cases, as the dialogue continued, he was really great about saying, well, help me understand how would this impact you? Everything from electric buses to cell phone bans proposed by the governor, to discussion about foundation aid, and what they would be looking at there, you know, every layer of the kinds of things we're talking about relative to the governors proposed by the Free Breakfast and Lunch for all students. His question often was, help me understand how I can help you, and I really appreciate that. We were able to give both he and the Senator Clark talking points and data from our district, which we provide them every year, and they're great about asking for that. It may not be known to a lot of people, but they're great about reaching out directly to us and counting on those expertise, as we all do, to walk through some of the numbers and how it will impact us, and this event was no exception to that. It was a great, great discussion, and he was just, again, because I was with him at the table the entire time, so receptive to all the information.
And the point of the event, really, as you said, is that opportunity for districts, leaders in districts, to say to our elected representatives, this is how your work will impact us, because we really need to be able to convey that information so that we know that they're going to do the things we need for kids and families.
Exactly.
And then coming up, we have our trip to Albany, and really, we'll, we'll rely on the work we did to prepare for the breakfast, our position papers, our legislative positions to bring, to meet with all sorts of other folks, who hopefully, sometimes they don't show up at the meetings. So just cross your fingers, we'll be meeting with the folks who said they want to meet with us, but Christina and I will be there, we'll meet Dr. McGowan there, and we'll report back next month.
It's the early morning Amtrak ride.
I think the 5:30 AM train to Albany. It's going to be great. Back by 8:00 PM that night.
Thank you. And something that Dr. McGowan alluded to, Karen is actually the co-chair on the Legislative Committee, and we greatly appreciate the work, because that's a ton of work that happened on Saturday, so thank you. Excuse me. Karen also noted that Mark Kokonovich, former Board President here, is our representative of BOSI's. I have his report in front of me. Monroe One Cabinet presented the Quarterly Steering Committee Updates. Like us, the Propolis 25, 26 academic year budgets covering the following areas have been presented and reviewed by the Board of Ed. Annual reserve plans have been reviewed. The academic school year calendar has been approved by their board, and they had a great attendance as well at the Legislative Breakfast on Saturday, February 1st. So they're up and humming, as it were, and we continue to be grateful for Mark's presence on behalf of Monroe County and BOSI's, but also more specifically on behalf of Brighton and the work he does there. Other Board Member Reports, and I'll start with you, Carrie Lynn, and we'll work this way.
I just wanted to do a little shout out to the VHS Mama Mia group of students, the stage crew, the directors, all the people who helped. It was a fantastic show, and I always enjoy getting to see the students, so, great job.
I, about a week and a half ago, attended the Health Education Program Periodic Review. This group is being led by Dr. Yu. It includes a set of teachers, school counselors, parents, and I served as the Board Representative. At the current, last meeting, we discussed a list of questions that we send out in evaluation to current students, staff, family members, and actually alumni from Brighton High School to assess their thoughts around their health education throughout their time in French Road, middle school, and high school. And I think it's going to really help the groups understand what the community's thoughts are around this to help us make our recommendations at our final meeting that's going to be in a couple more weeks, so, thank you.
Curriculum Council met on February 6th. We dove into the world of AI and how it could be used in education to empower teachers and students in developing independent thinking, problem-solving, and collaborative skills. We created guidelines with a focus on AI in student learning and instruction, and we also asked questions like, how does AI help students while still recognizing that students are people? And how can we engage AI but keep the room in our classrooms collaborative, enabling the children to continue to think critically and to continue with hands-on learning? So it's been very informative and satisfying work diving into that. I was also at the Information Exchange. I was on via Zoom, and that was really interesting, too, talking about students' privacy and with FERPA, and how it's, it's kind of a rabbit hole when you start diving into, you know, what is covered under our policies, what isn't, what's considered educational information and what isn't. But what, the takeaway I took from the meeting was that we take our children's, our students' privacy very seriously, and that it's good to know that this work is happening, that the students are being protected. And our school-based equity team for Brighton High School is scheduled to meet the week after break on February 27th.
I met with PTSA as their Board Representative, or I shouldn't say, I attended their meeting as the Board Representative last week, and as always, I'm amazed by the amount of work they're doing for kids and families in our buildings, and thank them always. And then tomorrow, I'll attend our World Language Program Evaluation Meeting. We're beginning to wrap up that work, reviewing data collecting from, collected from students, teachers, and parents, and beginning to think about next steps.
Cool. Board President Davis and I together attended the District-wide Safety Committee Meeting, which was held on January 30th, and Teresa Moser led this, and the topic was, first off, we reviewed a security and weapon detection system called Zero Eyes. We had a live demonstration of that as we continue to find a provider that just helps us increase our security and prevention. We also reviewed Safety and Security Dashboard Report and looked at the numbers there, and then we concluded with a discussion of potential contract security for B-shift and after-hours school events, sporting events, performing arts events, and things like that. It was a great meeting.
Okay. I attended the New York State School Board Association Diversity Equity and Inclusion Meeting last weekend, and it was the launch of this year's work with new members across the state on this committee. So we talked about our priorities for this year, the importance of continuing to do the work in our areas, and it was really a session to sort of reflect on how we wanted to move forward in that space. That's it for me.
Thank you. I'll note, you and I and Karen are on the Audit Committee. We have a meeting upcoming next month. It was moved just because of the volume of things we've got going on in the probationary review, so that'll be next month. We had a bunch of different construction meetings, the results of which included the approvals that you had tonight, and, you know, in the last five or eight years and over the next 10 years, there's a lot of work that has been done, that is in process and is being done in these schools, to create the best possible learning environments for all of our kids and all kinds of our kids, and can't thank that Buildings Team enough for all the work they do. There's a ton of stuff they do behind the scenes that nobody sees, that we all take for granted as a compliment, because it's just, everything's always working, and whether it's salt, or getting rid of ice, or getting rid of water, or getting things done, just greatly appreciative of all their work and the ways in which they save taxpayers money every day by their ingenuity and quick thinking and forward thinking. So, a ton of stuff going on with construction, as always, and just really proud to see the results. Nicole, ETA?
Yay. So teachers shared a lot of great things happening. Short report, not. So we'll start with Council Rock. So Mrs. Cannon, Mrs. Soravec, Mrs. Husky, and Mrs. Pappas with Mrs. Ayelo, they did a social studies project. We already look at urban, rural, and suburban, but they learned about urban heat islands and became city planners and designed their own cool city in the hab lab at Council Rock, and it's great because I think this ties almost into something that Dr. Smith used to do in AP Bio, right? With, yeah, so it's, we'll get there. Some great pictures of what they created. First grade ESS with Mrs. Yaman, they're working with partners, so this is from Rebecca Rizzo, to see if there are jewels in the treasure chest. They categorized them into opaque, translucent, transparent, and then, once they get the tally, they can open a code for a lockbox and get the treasure. So that was a great experience in her classroom. And in Liz's files in Caitlin Baker's classrooms, they studied penguins. So they looked at varieties of penguins, created their own informational books using Book Creator, the two penguins at the bottom are each different books that you can look at, and then they created penguin habitats. It tied right into Witten Wisdom, where they use text to learn and write about animals' features. For Kid Inventor Day, Mrs. Cannon, which was January 17th, Mrs. Cannon and Mrs. Orvex's class invented forts using toothpicks and marshmallows, for eating out of turn.
Edible construction supplies.
Yeah, I, hopefully, yeah, probably had to like set some aside for eating and some for building. In Extended Studies, kindergarteners explored National Toy Hall of Fame inductees and practiced their habits of mind, responding with wonder and awe. They were playing some silly putty there, so those are the photographs. They were also using habits of mind and seesaw to design action figures representing themselves. First grade ESS, they did what they did also in Mrs. Rizzo, where they retrieved, returned jewels to the king and queen of the Habits of Mind kingdom, and again, decided on how they would categorize the different materials, learned how animals use light to protect themselves, designed reflective signs incorporating biomimicry. The king and queen were so grateful that each student got a jewel to take home. Second grade ESS finished their cluster groups where they designed artwork that was placed on note cards, and they sold money, sold the cards to raise money for Wild Wings and Bell's Bud's Dog Rescue. They were able to donate 600 for each organization. Tyler Lucero, who's a geologist, came and visited all the second grade classrooms to talk about how rocks tell stories. They looked at color, shape, texture, that he, of rocks that he brought from his own collection. They then tried to figure out how far the rocks had traveled, was it a long distance or a short distance, and you can see some of their work there in thinking. The lunch groups for Extended Studies made their own trading card characters. These are just a few. There's a really great one, I love Fluffy Dog, because she runs and does math. Those are really great skills. On Friday, January 17th, kindergarteners in Mrs., in Lori Moulton's classroom tasted rice pudding to celebrate Pungal, which is a holiday celebrated in South India. Also kindergarten, and this is in the West Wing, so it was Mrs. Allen, Mrs. Diato, Mrs. Brongo, Mrs. Gucci, Mrs. Castro Hughes, and Mrs. Moulton, Lori Moulton. They learned about community and created a classroom food drive for the Brighton Food Cupboard with the cereal. I think that there was a video on, yeah, on Instagram of it, and they collected 105 boxes, so they're all lined up, ready to go there. Kindergarten and second grade, these are just two classrooms that celebrated Lunar New Year. One of those is mine, the second graders. They actually came up with the program that they wanted to teach and taught the whole class. They brought in different items, created a PowerPoint, and dressed up. It was really wonderful. And also in second grade, all the classrooms celebrate, or participated in Kid Inventor Day and made robot inventions in the hab lab. All of our instructional leaders, Katie Fallon, Jenny Ayelo, Stefana Monacino, and Jen Galla, they helped facilitate, and then the robot is the link to all the different classrooms and what they created. That was all Council Rock. I had to use two tables, yeah. At FRES, many classes participated in a breakout EDU activity called Snow Day at FRES. Again, the K5 instructional leadership team used the Maker Space to do this. They also worked on the Habits of Mind. They deciphered clues, unlocking a series of locks to break into a box, using math, cardinal directions, graphs, close reading skills. They found out that the Barun mascot had gone to 12 Corners Starbucks for hot cocoa during a snowstorm, and again, it was the critical thinking teamwork, problem-solving with the students, and you can see lots of friends working there. Mrs. Harp's tech education classes learned about coral reefs and coding. They learned how to code a robot to pick up litter. They, this meets the standards, or satisfies the standards for computer science and digital fluency, and the challenge was to collect the litter using the robot before the battery died and without actually damaging the coral reef. Several clubs sent in items, so this is, the second picture is the Third Grade Coding and Robotics Club, calibrating and color coding the Ozbot robots. Mrs. Ayelo went into Teacher Mas's class to discuss Martin Luther King and talk about how to be an activist. They learned about other child activists, and then they came up with problems that they wanted to work on and problem solve. Some of their ideas were homelessness, testing on animals, lack of adoption in senior dogs, trash in our oceans. Then from there, they started to problem solve and come up with solutions, and the idea of the lesson was just to show them that they can change the world, and we see some great examples. In Mrs. DeShields's class, they are learning how to crochet from their TA, Mrs. Whitman is coming in during wintime and helping them with that, and they are also learning about culture and created amazing booklets to share their culture with their classmates. In Miss Easterly's class, they are working on Witten Wisdom and scouting and studying descriptions from a text there. This is so cool. In Lisa Whitick's class, Miss Dixon's class, and Mrs. McSweeney's fourth grade classes, they've been writing to pen pals. A student that was Lisa Whitick's student is now a teacher and teaches English in Turkey, so they are now.
I loved this.
Yeah, they are now pen pals, and this is just a wonderful, it's amazing, wonderful. You can see those pictures. And this is all different grade levels, too, of students. Interpreters came to help Fresno students to, with the Monique Ber lessons that are taught under Aaron's Law, and they were able to have Turkish, Hebrew, Spanish, Arabic, Pashto, Ukrainian, and Chinese interpreters to make sure students understood the information being presented.
Amazing.
Interpreters came to help Fresno students to, with the Monique Berh lessons that are taught under Aaron's Law, and they were able to have Turkish, Hebrew, Spanish, Arabic, Pashto, Ukrainian, and Chinese interpreters to make sure students understood the information being presented.
That's amazing.
Yeah. This was a submission by Teacher Maz, testimonials that were from the Rainbow Club, and there's a lot, I'll just kind of let you read them, but they're pretty amazing, speaking to how they feel about being able to participate. At TCMS, Miss Vigiani's seventh grade annual class worked with her mom, who was a retired art teacher, and they created fabric squares for something called the Love Quilt Project, where the quilt squares are sent, turned into a quilt that's then taken to South Africa and delivered, but the idea is that someone cares about you from the other side of the world. Beautiful project. TCMS Library Club has been busy reading, creating hallway displays outside the library, and making bookmarks. And you can see two students contributed how they felt about being able to be part of that club. At the high school, French Club celebrated the holidays with cookie decorating, karaoke, and a French movie. They also had a Yule log, I'm not going to try and say that. Jessica Bay's 10th grade French class wrote fables and fairy tales. They were trying to understand the two tenses they learned and then shared their stories. In December and January, the varsity and junior varsity basketball teams did different volunteer projects. The varsity wrapped gifts for strong patients, and JB volunteered at pencils and paper. There's a fun picture of the ski lift from BHS Ski Club where there were 50 participants. This was a great one, too.
And there's actually snow for them to ski?
Yeah, it's coming, it's coming, too. The BHS Fashion Club meets every Thursday. They actually participated with other clubs, the Phoenix Art Club, Ceramics Collective, Photo Club, and Climate Club for a market, a holiday market. So this is them working on some of their projects. They wanted to stress that they work on budgeting, marketing, designing, pricing. You can see some great photos of those students. In January, the BHS Art Show was held, and student Sarah Jezu's AP Art and Design class had to curate their spaces, and then you can see their final presentation. Very proud of their work. There's a video for the Aspire English 10 Poetry Out Loud competition, if you click on that link. The German students, I know that they left today for their exchange, right? But they are working on the national German exam, where if they score in the 90th percentile, they can participate then in an interview. A student from all the interviewees will be chosen to be able to go on a trip to Germany. So our students left, plus you, today to go to Bremen, and then the visiting students come at the end of March. And, that's the last one, yeah. Teen Institute Club went to the Annual Heart of New York Leadership Conference. 10 students were selected to go and attend those activities on leadership, mental health prevention, and building community. They were trained and then were able to bring those skills back to share with the rest of the club. That's it. Lots going on in our schools.
You consistently show us an amazing, amazing array of students in action. Thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thanks for letting me share.
Excellent. Dr. Steele is feeling a little bit under the weather, so Dr. Lee has agreed to provide his update for the PTSA.
We'll read it, yes. So the PTSA always does amazing things, and they sent a list of highlights for January. Council Rock Primary School had joint summer camp and activity fair. 18 groups registered with 85 adults and 62 kids in attendance, so we're already thinking of summer camp in January. They fill up quickly, so 30 vendors came. There was a second grade movie night, Kung Fu Panda 4, sponsored by Wellness 360 and East Avenue Dentistry. And they had a Fun Food Friday on January 17th, but it doesn't say what the fun food is. I'm kind of curious.
I can ask Peggy.
Yeah. And if she tried it. French Road Elementary School also shared the Summer Camp and Activity Fair. They had a Fun Food Friday, but, and this one actually says what they did, dry sweetened green mango, which sounds delicious. They had a third grade bingo night and fourth grade bingo nights, both, let's see, third grade scheduled for 122 and 124, and then fourth grade had theirs, 128 and 131. And there were snacks available for faculty. In 12 Corners Middle School, there was a Positive Behavior Initiative. TCMS PTSA provided 30 local gift cards to TCMS, did I say, yeah, TCMS Administration for their Positive Behavior Initiative. There were grief counseling sessions. Executive Committee of the PTSA provided two lunches and two snacks. There was a fifth grade orientation and a sixth grade activity night, which I think our board member worked that sixth grade activity night.
Sure, Karen.
You did. Did you?
And lived to tell.
At the high school, the boys had a, the boys swim team had a fundraiser, January 15th. They met with Dr. Hall on the 22nd about what courses, oh, there was a meeting with Dr. Hall about what courses will your kids choose. Brighton Believes Day, the boys lacrosse team, Brighton Believes organized period pack activity, so putting together period packs to distribute, it sounds like. And the treasurer's report says that their calendar sales actually met the $8,000 goal that they were trying to achieve, and they're still waiting the final numbers about movie night, but it looks like they're at $1,000 towards the $1,200 goal that they had set for movie night. So that's great. So I'm, I can't wait for the next month, I care what wonderful things they're doing.
As both you and Karen noted, they're doing amazing things.
They are.
Thank you. Dr. McGowan?
I think Nicole gives the most amazing reports. But I want to go back and pull something out, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Because in the, in the effort to like give the great report, there is this one page that fits into something I wanted to say, and it was the highlights from the Rainbow Club. And I want you to hear this, all of you, but the community here, the kids are still used to. Dear School Board, I love Rainbow Club because it is so slay, and Teacher Maz is so supportive of everyone. This is my first year at Rainbow Club, and I love it. I'd like to also point out, they did give a definition of slay.
Yes.
So it's a good thing.
Was helpful for me. It's awesome. I had to ask Dan, a couple times recently, he translates in English for me, I'm feeling old. I think Rainbow Club is important to our school because it teaches all people aren't the same and others should respect them for that. Rainbow Club is importantly special to me because it makes me feel special and it's filled with fun crafts. The list can go on and on because of good old Teacher Maz. Rainbow Club is a special place because it represents all genders, even if they are not in Rainbow Club, no matter what or who they are on the inside. I like this one especially, and I just wanted to marinate a little bit. I love Rainbow Club because it is a safe place for me to be me. So I wrote to the community on Friday about the world, and I will just positively and genuinely in a caring way say to people without making political statements or talking about our head spinning, we have X, Y, or Z. The reality is we will continue to be us, continue to focus on the needs of every child here, and focus on these kinds of opportunities, and Rainbow Club was a good reminder of just kind of pulling it out and saying, you know, if this is who we are, nothing that's happening will changes who we are as humans and how we care for each other, and the importance of that in our space. So I'm glad for that reminder, and thank you for that in our report, just wanted to mention that. A budget exchange will go out, a thought exchange to continue that process this week, so we'd like people to keep an eye on. For that, it'll be open for a while, and we'll be able to start bringing that feedback to that subsequent meetings. And I'm really excited to join two of you on a trip to Guatemala with our kids. The report that I gave last year on this trip to help build a model school, continuing that with our first annual, hopefully annual Brighton Believes Global Citizen Trip, and really looking forward to being in that space, learning from others about immigration, about our role as global citizens, about the ways that our role over time historically in our country has impacted what has happened in other places, and really for our kids and the adults with them to learn more about that experience and participate in giving back to a group of people. But frankly, we will get much more when we get, I suspect. So we'll leave Thursday morning, be back next week, and looking forward to telling you all about it. And looking forward to Christine and Carrie Lynn telling you a lot of them and I, and seeing it through their eyes. I can't wait to see them see it. I'm really excited, so, thank you.
Thank you. I'll note, and I apologize when constructing the agenda, I double listed the construction approvals. So what's currently listed is item 12. Should not have had in there, so we get to walk over that because we did approve that in previous agenda items. Finally, the consent agenda, which includes approval of personnel changes, recommendations from the Committee on Special Education and the Committee on Preschool Special Education, field trip approvals for the Bremen trip in Germany, a number of different eating opportunities, fundraising. Go out, we have a burger, some fries, some Chipotle, some Tom Walls, and support any of a number of organizations and teams, including Key Club, Class of 2028, Girl Up, Brighton Indoor Track, Brighton Runners Boosters. TCMS is doing a pop tab collection fundraiser to benefit Ronald McDonald. And the big 2025 Dodgeball Teams fundraiser at the large gymnasium on March 12th. Be there or be square. Questions with regards to the consent agenda? Motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Carrie Lynn?
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor?
Right.
Couple of quick closeout notes. As always, Bill, Mike, and Simon, thank you for making everything work and for making this meeting accessible to everyone. The February 25th meeting, which is the next meeting two weeks from tonight, I will note that the start time is 5:00 p.m. because there's a community forum at 7:00 p.m. And Dr. Gessbrina will amaze you with her meeting leadership abilities. It will be awesome. And I'll just build on one thing Dr. McGowan said, because not only do we have people going to Guatemala, we have people going to Germany, and we have people connecting, as Nicole pointed out, with students in Turkey. So a way that you make the world a better place is you reach out and meet people where they are and try to understand who they are. So incredibly proud of this school district and the opportunities we create for students and faculty and families alike. That's a great way to end this discussion. Want to add something?
Nope.
Okay. Okay, with that, I offer a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Karen.
Second.
Seconded by Eleanor. All those in favor?
Right.
We are adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.